Good morning and welcome to the Wednesday, May 12th, 2021 Board of County Commission Meeting. Just in case you didn't know, this is actually going to be an extension of the budget hearings, so I'll present to you. I'm just joking. Just a joke. Making sure you're on your toes. I'm Akeem Ashford, the Director of Strategic Communications. At this time, I'd like to welcome Sherri Utash, President of WSU Tech and VP of Workforce Development for WSU. She's going to come up and say a few words about this year's National Signing Day.
Thank you. And I'd just like to preface that, that, you know, one of the positions that we have as a county commission is we have a position on the board at WSU Tech, and I've had the honor and pleasure of serving on that board. And we've done some updates on other boards that we serve on. And obviously Sherri and Dr. Utash and WSU Tech, they have various things, and I just thought it was, as we've shared some things, I thought it was very valuable to have, invite Sherri to, to say a couple of words and to show what she does. So, welcome.
Thank you Chairman Meitzner for the invitation and good morning to all the Commissioners. Just a really quick kind of background, and then I've got a video to show you. But as a background, seven years ago, the President of Washburn Tech and I were just kind of daydreaming, and he was an old basketball coach, and we started talking about how we could celebrate the dignity of work across this state and how we could celebrate students' choices to choose career technical education. So we dreamed up National Signing Day. And National Signing Day is a day that we started, the two of us, seven years ago, where we brought students and their parents and, and their family members into an opportunity to celebrate their decision to choose career technical education at our colleges. And it's just like if you were an athlete and being signed, you know, to go, I remember my daughter was signed to go play volleyball, and it was so cool, you know, and it was really, we, we just really patterned it right off of that. So they come in and they sign a letter of intent, and they get a ball cap, and they get a scholarship, and their families are there, and it's a big celebration. Their counselors are there, their principals are there. And so it's kind of just grown into, this year, there were over 300 colleges across the nation that celebrated National Signing Day along with us. And the other thing that's grown with this is that, two years ago, WSU Tech became like the National Signing Desk ESPN Game Day Pre-Show for National Signing Day. And Lily Wu comes in and moderates with us and facilitates, and we bring in different people to come in and talk to the students and congratulate them. For instance, we brought in the CEO and President, Nick Pinchuk of Snap-on Tools for the last two years, and he's come in and so, and honored our students all across the nation. So this thing has just become this big, big thing. But we actually have a ESPN Game Day setup that we put in our hangar, and we've done that the last two years, and we'll continue to do that, it looks like. And we did live cut-ins to two other colleges, you know, across the nation. And like everybody else this year, we really had to pivot this and move it to virtual. So it was a little bit more difficult to do virtual, but all in all, we were successful, and the bottom line is we wanted to celebrate students. So across the na, we had about 200 students that we actually honored on National Signing Day. But across the nation, we had, you know, cumulative, we had over 7,000 students that were celebrated for the dignity of work and the choice that they're making in career tech education. So I've got a short video that just really sums the whole thing up.
We're here for Signing Day 2021.
I'm here for the Signing Day Scholarship. I signed a letter of intent with WSU Tech, and I got $1,000 towards my tuition.
This scholarship means hope, because it means I can go to school.
What am I most excited about?
I'm just really excited for my future and to see what I can do with it. It's work with my hands and work on the airplanes out in the hangar.
Finding a good job.
Being hands-on versus just being in the classroom.
The good I'm going to do in people's lives and the difference I'm going to make in them.
I'm most excited about joining the job force.
My name is Savannah Serrano, and I'm interested in police science.
Hospitality and events management.
Welding program.
I'm doing a nursing program.
And I'm coming to WSU Tech for business and psychology.
The construction science program.
My name is Kenna, and I'm doing business.
The EMT program.
I want to go into the LPN program.
I'm in aviation maintenance technology.
And I'm going into HVAC.
Digital marketing, and I'm going into the welding program.
I'm going in the interior design program.
We are at National Signing Day.
Yeah, I'm here for the money.
Taking it to the bank.
I'm here for the money.
And I'm here for a $1,000 scholarship.
I'm here for the money.
I'm here for the $1,000 scholarship.
Show me the money.
I always love this day. It's kind of like, and you get a scholarship, and you get a scholarship, and you get a scholarship, or you shoot the money machine, one of the two. So it's really cool. And I think, I think the other thing that's so great about this is that, you know, they're being celebrated and honored by their parents, just like they would if they were a student athlete going on. But think about this. Certainly during the last 14, 15 months, and we have some EMT and paramedic, emergency management people back here, but you think about it, the, the careers that these young people are signing up for in, in signing a letter of intent, they're those essential jobs. Those are essential workers. They're great careers. They're people that we need in our community. And so for that, we're very happy that they've made that choice. And I tell you, the even better piece of this is as of Monday, 75% of those students that signed that letter of intent and received that scholarship have enrolled for fall at WSU Tech. So it's a big win.
Wow.
So thank you for the opportunity to share.
Sherri, thank, thanks for, for, for that. I don't know, any comments from, yeah, Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you. I think that you've taken something that when I graduated high school wasn't, wasn't the cool thing to do, right? It was actually looked down upon to go to a tech school or go to a community college, because all of my peers were going to, you know, big universities when I couldn't go to that. Like, I couldn't afford to go. So I feel like, I mean, I'm almost kind of in tears with this, because it is so, it is such an out-of-the-box thinking, you know, innovative way that you, you always come up with these, so it's no surprise. But I, I love to see how much it's grown, and just to really empower students to do what they want to do, instead of feeling like they have to go to a big university and have a bunch of debt at the end of their graduation. It's, it's just awesome. So thank you for being here and sharing this with us.
Sure, my pleasure.
Commissioner Dennis? Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Dr. Utash, thank you for being here and telling us about the great things that WSU Tech is doing to help our future workforce. I've always said that our future workforce is in school right now, and we have to make sure that we prepare them for their future. As a career and tech ed teacher myself in a previous life, and a member of the State Board and previously, I understand the importance of, of career and tech education, because four-year college, master's degree, doctor's degree isn't appropriate for every single person, so they have to follow their passion. And you give them the opportunity to follow their passion. Thank you very much for what you do.
Sure, thank you. Those are your future workforce. Those are your future taxpayers.
That's true. So, and, and just to remind anybody that's watching, this, this school was, was invented as a result of the business community and the aviation industry coming together to the county commissions and the other, this was before our time, and saying, we have to do something to, more than just four-year college people, like, like Commissioner Cruz was saying, we, we need to do something to keep kid, young adults, kids enthused about, about a job, and it's not, it's not going to college. And so this whole thing came together, and Cedric County made an obligation to build that, that fine National Center for Aviation Training, commonly known as NCAT facility. And it's, it's exploded, and I think Sherri was involved originally, and then elevated herself to be the, the doctorate degree and the president of the university, and it's, now we've got a campus that, where are all our campuses at? You have?
We have four different campuses. So we have our NCAT campus, we have one downtown in Old Town, that is our healthcare campus that we share with Wichita State University. And then behind East High School, we have our City Center, which is Applied Technologies and IT. And then newly renovated over at the old Wichita Mall is WSU South, that we renovated about 85,000 square feet. We, we will, we will serve a little over 8,000 total students in this community for credit this year. And in addition to that, we have trainers that are out in industry every single day, recertifying the aviation industry. We touch another probably 8,000 to 10,000 there.
Right. There's a lot of universities that would like to have 8,000 enrollment, so.
Yes, there are.
Sherri, thanks, thanks for coming.
Sure.
You're, you're a good leader in our community and, and a friend as well, so appreciate it very much.
Thank you all very much. Have a great day.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Sherri. Commissioners, I'd also like to share with you the financial help flyer by Everji. The flyer includes information for the Low-Income Energy Assistance Program, the Emergency Rental Assistance, and Project Deserve. These are all programs, the organizations that partner with Everji to help you pay and save on your energy bills. For more information, visit everji.com/financialassistance or call 800-383-1183. Chairman and Commissioners, taking a look at today's agenda, you'll adopt a proclamation declaring Emergency Medical Services Week. You'll adopt a resolution appointing Commissioner Lopez's members to the Cedric County Second District Citizens Advisory Board. Under New Business, Glennon Martins, Director of the Department of Corrections, will lead a conversation on recidivism. Next, there is a receive and file presentation of the quarterly financial report from Deputy CFO Brent Shelton. And with that, Chairman, I will turn the meeting over to you, sir.
Okay. Again, welcome, everybody, and thank you Commissioners for being here. We've had a busy last week of budget hearings, but today is Wednesday, May 12th, and we're at a regular meeting of a Cedric County Board of Commissions meeting. So with that, we'll call the meeting to order. Madam Clerk?
Invitation to be observed by a moment of silence. Please remain standing for the flag salute.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. Commissioner Lopez?
Present.
Commissioner Dennis?
Present.
Commissioner Howell?
Present.
Commissioner Cruz?
Present.
Chairman Meitzner?
Present. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Public agenda.
Commissioners, you received, we've received, I think, one, uh, public agenda comment. Does anybody have any questions or comments about that? Commissioner Howell?
Certainly, thank you, Chairman. And of course, I don't know if you have the person speaking today or not, but I'll be glad to make a motion to receive and file the public comments today at the appropriate time. But regarding the one written comment today, there was a, a comment we received from someone regarding a, what they called, they termed it as, they termed this as like a rough ride in, in an ambulance. And so when you call 911, you get an ambulance, and you get a transport somewhere, this person is, is, is concerned that the, the transportation, the ride is actually very, very rough. I would just say, this is actually the second time I've received this complaint, and I actually kind of worked this issue a couple, about a year and a half ago, maybe, a year ago. And I asked for some, some analysis on this issue to find out if it's a legitimate complaint. Are we, are we normal, or are we different? And again, and again, what can we do to maybe soften the ride or make this more comfortable for our patients that are being transported? I do think it's an issue that we ought to take a look at, and I will, I guess I'll dust off my concerns on that, ask once again that we would, I guess, find out, again, you know, from the patient's perspective, is this, is this a bad experience? And if so, what can we do to make it better? And, and again, maybe, maybe this is just normal for ambulances, I just don't know. But since I've received this complaint twice, I think it's relevant, it's, it is important that we don't miss the opportunity to identify a problem if there is a problem. So I guess I'll, I'll just let you know, Manager, and I see Dr. Gallagher in the audience, that I will be probably asking for, I guess, a re, another conversation on that topic. And I also did request a ride-along in an ambulance, but I've not been allowed to do that yet, so I guess I'll be, I'll be asking for that again. Thank you.
Okay. You want to make a motion to receive and file?
We have someone on, I'm glad to do that for this, or if you want to wait until the other person speaks, that's fine, but I'd be glad to make a motion to receive and file these public comments.
Okay, I'll second that. Motion to receive and file, the electronic copies we received. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. And we also have one person signed up for public comment to address the commission. This is, I believe it's Mr. Charles Reinert. Are you on the phone, Mr. Reinert?
Charles, are you there?
Yes.
Mr. Reinert? Good morning, Mr. Reinert. This is Chairman Meitzner, and welcome to the, to the commission meeting, and you're more than welcome. Please state your name and address, and you have up to five minutes to address the commission.
All right. I live outside a derby on East 79th Street. What I'm talking, or calling about is mowing of the Big Ditch. And what I understand here, a few years ago, they used to let farmers or ranchers come in and bail it, and whatever reason, they decided not to do that the past two or three years. I did not priorly bail, but I was interested in, and another friend of mine said that they had, but they weren't allowing it anymore. So last year, I talked to one of the fieldmen, and he seemed like he liked it, he thought it made sense, and it made their job easier, they had to go out and mow. But the manager had nothing, did not want anything to do with it. And I explained, it didn't make any sense to me. You got somebody willing to come in here and pay you to mow your grass, and anybody that has a yard would appreciate that, I would think. It saves you fuel, equipment, manpower, and you're getting a small fee for allowing that to happen. Um, you know, I think something was said to the effect, well, sometimes it wasn't mowed and bailed as cleanly as they wanted it to. And my, I guess, view on that is it'd be a lot cheaper to go out there with one mower to clean a few spots up than with three to do the whole thing. On top of which, I observed that, um, there in the south part of the Big Ditch, it was probably November, December before they even mowed it once. So there was a fire hazard out there most of the year, or in the fall, and nothing was done with it. So, yeah, I guess what I understand is the city pays for part of the maintenance, and the county pays for part of the maintenance, and wanted to see what your guys' input was on it. And I guess that's kind of my main concerns or thoughts, and what's, what's your views?
Okay, well, thank you, Mr. Reinert. Your, your last part of your comment was, was correct. The Big Ditch, as it's commonly known, is, is a massive operation that's split 50-50 between the Cedric County and the city of Wichita. Along with that is numerous investments and improvements in maintenance each year. And what you're saying is kind of interesting, but what we'll need to do is, is we can ask our Public Works Director that oversees that to get with the city Public Works Director and see if there's any, I know that because it's a floodway, there's some state and federal regulations, so that might prohibit an individual from doing what you're asking to do. But, but why don't we have, we've got your name and your address here and your phone number, so why don't we have our Public Works Director, get with the city Public Works Director and see if, if there's a chance to, to help you out or, or provide you a reason.
Well, I think it, it not only helps me, it helps the finances of the city and the county.
Absolutely, yeah. I agree.
You know, and what I understand, what I'm getting is there is no basic reason, except that one of the managers was being offended that somebody didn't mow it as cleanly as they thought they would. And for, um, you know, for that to be an excuse, you know, in the last few years, we've been fortunate to get rainfall, but here, short, you know, this year maybe, we're going to be short on rain, and hay's going to be a premium price. And the ranchers and everybody in their area is going to benefit if we can put, you know, the hay up that we need to put up. And you can see, and now the, you know, the grain prices are getting higher, hay will be a premium. And so you're going to benefit some of the community. Well, you're going to benefit all the community, not only the rancher, the, you know, whoever's feeding the hay, but also it's going to save money on your equipment, your fuel, your manpower. And that offends one of your managers, that I would think that'd be his problem and not the counties and cities.
Right. Well, I appreciate that. Thank you for bringing it to our attention, and we'll, we'll do some follow-up, so.
Very good, appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. All right, have a good day.
Thank you.
Okay. There's nobody else that was signed up for, for public comment? Okay. And a motion to receive and file?
Second.
Just a motion to receive and file, that, and, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Next item, please.
Proclamations. Item A, Proclamation Declaring Emergency Medical Services Week.
Okay, Commissioners, we have a proclamation I'd like to read for the Emergency Medical Services Week. Whereas, emergency medical services is a vital public service, and the dedicated paramedics and emergency medical technicians of Cedric County, emergency medical services are committed to provide exemplary medical care and ambulance transportation to the citizens of Cedric County. And whereas Cedric County EMS is ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And whereas, access to quality emergency health care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury. And whereas, the emergency medical services system consists of emergency physicians, emergency nurses, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, firefighters, educators, and administrators, and other healthcare professionals. And whereas, the members of emergency medical services teams, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their lifesaving skills. And this is the last whereas, it is appropriate to recognize the value and accomplishments of emergency medical service providers by designating Emergency Medical Services Week. So now therefore, be it resolved, that I, Chairman Meitzner, and the Board of Cedric County Commissioners do hereby proclaim the week of May 16th to the 22nd, that's next week, as Emergency Medical Services Week. The 2021 theme for EMS Week is, quote, "This is EMS, caring for our communities," unquote. I encourage the community to observe this week and appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities, and hereby, with this proclamation, I will make a motion to approve the proclamation as read.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. And here to receive the, the proclamation is Dr. Gallagher. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Some of that's a mouthful.
Yeah, there was, a lot of words. Medical, medical words.
Sean Gallagher, Director of EMS, privileged to come and accept this. I do have a brief statement I'd like to provide. I'm joined today by my, members of my leadership team, here to join me in accepting this. This past year, with COVID-19, many of us on the front lines were challenged in ways we never dreamed possible. And when called, our EMS team responded, from emergency physicians and nurses to paramedics, technicians, and educators. And that's why this, this year's proclamation that recognizes it as EMS Week is particularly important. Every day, members of our EMS network show up, often at the worst times in a person's life, and deliver lifesaving emergency health care when it's needed most. Our EMS team remains steadfast in our service to the people of Cedric County. Exceptional times call for exceptional people to step up, and our EMS team has done that. And we will continue to do what is needed to serve at the highest level possible. For these reasons and many more, we're pleased to represent the EMS team in recognition of this proclamation and EMS Week. Thank you all.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Howell?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to say thank you for being here today. I think initially, this was supposed to happen next week, but I, I really wanted it to be this week, because I think we want to give, give recognition for the entire week, rather than just starting this next Wednesday. So thank you, Mr. Manager and others, for making this happen this week instead. You said something interesting, Dr. Gallagher. I do think that, again, the COVID certainly does bring in unique challenges, and that's absolutely true. We have, we do have some challenges in this organization, and I know that these folks have stepped up, sometimes working as many as 18 hours a day. And that sounds like, to me, anyone who, who provides that type of professional skillset at the 18th hour is, is truly going above and beyond the call of duty. So thank you for your team. They are, in my opinion, professionals, they are skilled, and I trust them to deliver patient care in the field, as, as this community depends on them as well. And I know, just a, a call out to people in the community that may, may not, may not know this, but we, we would have a call to people to consider being part of our EMSS, Emergency Medical Systems, System, EMSS, I guess, I said that wrong. We have open positions, and it's an honorable, it's an honorable job, and we would love to have people come and work for Cedric County. And I know there's at least 20 positions open, I believe, right now. And with that, I just want to say thank you to your team. I know they're probably listening. I want to just encourage them to let them know that we love them, appreciate them, and ask them to, to, to continue on, and thank you for being a part of Cedric County's team. And thank you for your leadership as well.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you, Chairman. Do any of you want to say anything? I'd like to hear from you, if you have something, anything prepared? No?
I promised them you wouldn't make them speak. Don't make me a liar.
Well, thank you for being here today. What, what is planned? Are there any events planned next week?
We do, yes. We have several things. So we've partnered with the local hospitals for several events that they coordinate, but we've also partnered with our employee association to host two employee recognition picnics. So we'll be having one of those, one on each shift as well. You, of course, are welcome to, to join if you'd like. I can send the information over.
I also got an alert yesterday. The Kansas EMS Association is doing a Peer Support Stronger Together event at the Best Western. Are any of you participating in that?
I'm not sure who we have involved in that. I do know we have people involved. I can't recall off the top of my head who exactly it is. But yes, it's a spectacular effort. It actually stems from a national Stronger Together campaign, but that's the, the local version of it. So yeah, absolutely.
Okay, and so will there be a, a list of all of those events somewhere where we could all see?
Absolutely.
Okay. All right. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you for being here. Thank you for all you do. Obviously, it's an incredible service. Hopefully, most citizens do not need your service, but, but when they do, you show up. And so thank you very much.
Very good.
All right, have a great day and a good celebration. Okay, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Appointments. Item B, Resolution Appointing Members to the Cedric County Second District Citizens Advisory Board.
Okay. Mr. Papin? Yes, Mr. Chairman. Mike Papin, County Counselor. Item B for appointments today is the 12 appointments to Commissioner Lopez's Citizens Advisory Board for District 2. I'll read off the names of the 12 individuals that Commissioner Lopez is wanting to serve on her Citizens Advisory Board. There are resolutions in your back up pointing each of these, each of these individuals, and they'll be subject to your approval. The 12 individuals that she's recommending are Dr. Williams Hammers, Spencer Dean Jr., Jenny Dwong, Martha Pint, Nicole Helms, Tabitha Layman, Dr. John Burke, Manuel Lopez, Dr. Susan Norton, Jan Marple, Anthony Lee Gonzalez, and Leslie Ann Nami. And we prepared, as I mentioned, prepared resolutions appointing all 12 of these individuals, and ask that you approve the resolutions. Okay. Commissioner Lopez?
Thank you. I am just kind of overwhelmed with the response I got from putting this board together and the amount of people who applied. I want to say we had well over 60 applicants, so I had the worst problem to have, which was just so many amazing people who are interested in being part of this and helping build the South Side and seeing what we can do to better our communities. So I want to thank everybody who applied originally, and hopefully, you know, if you didn't get chosen this time, there will be opportunities to continue to engage with you and, and with the county, and especially focused on District 2. and, and with the county, and especially focused on District Two. So, um, thank you for everyone, and then also for everyone who is now going to be on this board. I mean, this obviously takes time, and takes time from your family and everything, and I just can't tell you how much I appreciate that, and I am looking forward to getting this started. So, I will make a motion to adopt this resolution.
Second.
Okay. There's a motion and a second. Any other comments? Being done, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Congratulations, Commissioner. You're left with your cap. Okay. Next item, please.
New business. Item C, Department of Corrections Recidivism Discussion.
Okay. Welcome, Glenda. Welcome to the, uh, meeting.
Good morning, Commissioners. Chairman Meitzner. If you will remember, last week during budget, um, hearings, we were talking about, when I did my budget presentation, we were talking about recidivism. And, um, there was some questions and some, they wanted to continue this on for today, and so I want to bring that back up, bring that forward to answer any questions. Um, we had originally, I presented you with a document that showed what our recidivism rate was for the Department of Corrections with all of our programs, with a, uh, a total program rate of 7%, which is the lowest it's ever been. Um, and it's extremely low for the state. The state's recidivism rate is around 33%, and national organization's about 44%. So, you can see 7% is pretty phenomenal. There was also a question about, um, success rate, and what I will explain is that when, um, we look at a program, and we can use Drug Court for an example, um, in 2019, we had a 52% success rate. And of those successful completions, we do a recidivism check on. And it was at that time that they give a 4% recidivism. So, that's 96% of those that successfully completed the program. And only 4% went back and had a new conviction or new re-confinement into that program. So, that, we wouldn't have called them successful. So, we're, what we're looking at in the Department of Corrections is, we have a lot of programs. We look for the success of that program, but then we want to see if the behavior change really happened. And that takes place a year, three years, five years after the person leaves the program. So, I'm open for any questions, um, that the Commissioners might have.
Okay. Well, thanks, Glenda. Yes, there is, obviously, recidivism is incredibly important for the community and Sheriff Easter at the jail and, and your corrections department. So, um, the goal to, uh, to get to 100% of recidivism, uh, rate would be fantastic, or lack of recidivism, or 0%.
0%.
0%. Whatever. 0, 100, whatever. Anyway, thanks. I know there were some questions about this, and, uh, because we were going through budget process, and, uh, that's a very quick response for you to, to get back here, and I appreciate it very much.
Absolutely. And I just want to say, when we look at all of our programs, we, each program has different outcomes. Recidivism is only one of the outcomes that we look at. Um, if they're in a residential facility, we look at how many AWOLs, um, that we had. We might look at, um, uh, did we have any injuries, things like that. So, there's a lot of different outcomes that we look at when we look at a program.
Right. Right. Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you for coming again today. And I, I do think that a slightly deeper conversation today, today was certainly warranted, and I appreciate your leadership in our corrections, uh, umbrella. You do a tremendous job, so let me start with that.
Thank you.
Thank you. And to the audience and to my, to my colleagues, let me just say that I'm here partly because of you today. You know what I'm talking about, right?
Mm-hmm.
So, your history is that she was, um, she was our leader in, in the Judge Redell Boys' Ranch program for many years. And, um, I got to know you then, and I'm, and I've always been impressed with you. So, thank you for your history of that. And I was disappointed in, in the actions of the Commission and the, and the county back in 2013 and 14, when they moved to close that ranch despite the fact that it was successful. And when you say successful, how do we know it was successful? Because, again, we track the data, and we know that it was, it was churning out changed lives. And some of these, some of these young men are, are in this community to this day. So, many of them have families and businesses, and they're, and they're paying taxes, and they're engaged in this community and the economy in, in a very responsible and proud way. And, and their springboard to that success came from you and that program. So, let me just say upfront, I, I think we had some good history here. Unfortunately, the state of Kansas didn't do their job. I fought for years legislatively to solve that problem, and I think we had some successes, but unfortunately, the county didn't, did not partner with me or the legislature, and, and we unfortunately divided, um, split our, split our, uh, belief in what should happen there, and the county was very intent in shutting that down. I believe it turned out to be political, unfortunately, and that, and, and as it turns out, I think that, um, again, I know we're doing the best we can, we're doing the best we can with what we have today.
Mm-hmm.
And these programs, these community-based programs are, are, I think, the new way that this country handles a lot of these issues. But I'm still concerned personally about, there are some kids that fall through the cracks because it is actually just not enough. And I, and I continue to track this out-of-home residential placement. We don't have any good options in Kansas at this point because the state, in my opinion, has, has violated their, their mission or their call to provide a space for these kids that frankly, um, could be salvaged, but unfortunately are either left in the community without proper supports, or they're sent to a, a juvenile prison of some sort here in Kansas. And so, I don't, I don't like our options. I think we need to have other options still. You're welcome to comment on any of that. By the way, those ideas were brought forward primarily by NCSL and CSG. I remember the debates we had in Topeka, and, and as a consequence, when I finally did leave there, uh, the following year in 2015, I believe it was, correct me if I'm wrong on the date, but Senate Bill 367 passed.
Mm-hmm.
I think that was 2015, I believe.
20, uh, 2017.
20, oh, it was later than I thought. Okay.
Yeah.
And one of the things that's happened in, in Senate Bill 367 is there's a, an effort, basically, to not conclude with a conviction of a child. These, these young folks are, are involved in, they have troubled activities, they do things that are, that maybe historically would have been prosecuted and probably, and probably convicted. But there's a desire not to develop, if you will, a criminal record. And so, the, a lot of these young folks are treated in the community and, and ultimately not prosecuted. And again, you're welcome to speak to that.
Mm-hmm.
One of my concerns is this issue of 7% in Sedgwick County. Is it real? Um, so let's define what recidivism means in one year. One year is a conviction of a subsequent criminal offense. Again, it'd be something, I assume, similar to the first one, within 12 months.
It could be anything.
Could be anything.
Any conviction. Mm-hmm.
So, these young folks, again, so the adjudication process takes time. So, imagine they, they come through the, they, they get some services from Sedgwick County after conviction, and then, uh, in one year, they, they do something wrong, and they are apprehended, prosecuted, and convicted in 12 months. That's a pretty fast system. And again, especially in light of what's happened since, uh, March of 2020, I don't know with that 7%, what, what's the date? What's the, uh, what year would that 7% be?
That, it would be 2019.
Okay. So, before the.
So, it's the successful completions from 2019. And just, just so you know, we also do recidivism checks, not just at the one year, but three year and five year. What's reported in our strategic plan is just at the one-year level.
Okay. I, I think as a Commissioner, I would love to see the, the other, the other two levels of data.
Sure.
And again, I also think that, again, please correct me if I'm, if I'm wrong, but the juvenile, uh, records are somewhat different than the adult records, and so it's hard to, to follow someone from the juvenile system into the adult system. And I don't know how that impacts our data, but I guess I'm concerned that if someone, say, is 16 or 17 when they commit a crime, are we still able to track them to three and five years?
Yes, we do. We, we can track them. Um, just, I want to speak to one thing that you brought up, which was very interesting. It's a quick little story that just happened today in the elevator coming up to this meeting. Uh, a young man on the elevator said, "Are, is your name Glenda? Are you Glenda?" And I, it startled me, and of course, you can't see people very well with your masks on. Um, it was one of the boys, from the Boys Ranch that graduated from the program. And so, we have a lot of these juveniles in our community that still remember the Boys Ranch and the success it had, and we just had a, uh, situation in an elevator, and he gave me the biggest hug ever, which is what they usually do, because he was a successful program kid. Um, now, I'm not sure why he's up at the courthouse, but it's been a little while since we graduated, and I'm, I'm thinking he was probably 2013. Uh, he definitely has grown and is a young man now, not a young kid. Um, but it was just something that just happened. Um, with recidivism, we do track not just the juveniles, the adults across the, the board. We keep track of all of our programs because we want to know, mostly, what we want to know is, was our program successful? Did it change behavior? Did it do what it was intended to do? And we don't know that if we don't check and see, um, now, if people do go out and get arrested, that doesn't mean they get convicted of something. So, that's why we specifically look only for convictions and, um, re-confinements, because that's also the national, um, definition. And so, um, we've been doing that with all of our programs for many, many years. I will tell you that back in about 2017, when I became the Director, one of the things we had to do is make sure that we were all collecting the data that was specific. So, I went back through and, um, made sure that the staff were collecting the data, that the definition was the same, um, for all the programs, and so they report those programs out every year, and we check it.
Thank you. Couple of questions on that. So, the, the national number of 44%, are they using the same definition that we're using?
Yes.
So, 40, so nationally, nationally, 44% of juvenile convicts end up with a subsequent conviction, and 40, 44% of them, subsequent conviction in 12 months?
It, I, I, they'll say it's adult and juvenile. They won't say it's just juvenile.
Okay.
And so, when I gave you the 7%, that's for adults and juveniles. And, um, there is a breakdown for each program, so I can tell you what the recidivism is for each program, and I think that might be on your sheet. But each program has a recidivism rate. The totality is 7%. So, one of the programs, let's just look at one of them, um, that we've never had before, ever, is our adult, adult residential program. Okay? Um, they had a 0% recidivism. So, any of those people that successfully completed that program in 2019, after one year, did not get re-convicted or re-confined. And I, we've never seen that before.
Do you have the two-year data?
Sorry?
We have data for every single year, but it, that's for that particular program. But yes, since, only from 2017 because I had to get everybody on the same page on the recidivism. Yes.
Just a final comment about the JRBR, then I have one other question, but, um, so looking back, this is a, this program started back in the 1950s. It was a 50-bed facility that literally, hundreds and hundreds, hundreds of, of young folks, troubled kids, went through that program, and, um, it's changed countless lives, in my opinion. Initially, that was, I think, the cost of that was completely borne by the county initially, until the 1970s, when the YRC II program was developed by the state, and they essentially adopted that program from the county. And so, we shifted our mentality, our commitment to this investment from personally investing from Sedgwick County, uh, thinking that this was, that this was good for this community, shifting this over to, shifting this over to the state. And then, again, our demand to the state was, you're not paying enough, we need more. And, uh, and of course, I think the state is broke, and so that, that obviously became a problem. But the YRC II program, I think, um, was obviously impacted by Senate Bill 367. So, my question to you would be, in light of the fact that we're now several years down, uh, down, down past the implementation of Senate Bill 367, what changes should be made to improve our outcomes or improve our processes that relate to these, these troubled kids?
Mm-hmm.
What can we do differently, if anything?
Well, and I also brought Steve Stonehouse with me. Steve is, uh, the Deputy Director for all the juvenile programs, and Steve and I, um, you know, have gone through and looked at all the changes. So, when we talk about Senate Bill 367, we're not talking about one or two changes. That was a very lengthy bill. It had, um, multiple little areas of, in it that changed, and it changed over the course of two years. So, implementation didn't just start July 1. It changed every year. There were different steps that occurred, and I think the final step was July of 2019. And so, um, as we looked through, and remember, you have to, you're asking me, and we're the Department of Corrections, and our perspective, which is not the same and wouldn't be the same necessarily as a DA or the court. So, when we look at Senate Bill 367 and all the changes it made, there were very few negative changes that we could even come up with. And, um, it really, uh, has helped our system. We don't put juveniles in detention for being runaways. There's no sink cases in detention. There has to, they have to have, um, a, there's a, a, a state assessment tool that every youth that's brought into GIAC gets assessed to determine whether or not they should be in detention, uh, and that's a state tool that's used. The only time we really, um, deter from that is if there's a firearms-involved situation, and the court has allowed us to, um, uh, put kids in detention for those reasons. Those are what we called overrides. Those were good things. Um, so the kids that are currently sitting in our detention facility are the right kids that should be in detention. Um, they're not sink kids, children in needed care kids. Um, there were, uh, detention hearings that were set up with Senate Bill 367. So, in other words, a kid just wouldn't languish and sit in detention. Those hearings are every 14 days, so that we don't let children, uh, slip through the gaps. We implemented some programs through our evidence-based funds and the community reinvestment money to hire an expediter. And so, we have an expediter that emerged from those fundings that looks at kids to see if there's another placement available for them. So, we, the part of that Senate bill collected funding that what goes back to the community that we can, um, help kids that are in, that are put in our home, back in the homes that weren't out-of-home placements. And so, those kids now get services, and that is part of the evening reporting program. Those, those are the kinds of things that we're doing with the funding that these kids get, and it's being, we're being very successful with those kids. So, I don't know. I'm going to invite Steve up. He might want to talk about, um, I think there was just really one area that we felt like, one or two areas that the Senate Bill, um, had.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. I'm Steve Stonehouse. I'm Deputy Director of Juvenile Services. As Glenda discussed, this, this was an evolution over two years with different parts of the bill coming into place. When Commissioner Howell asks about what needs to be changed, there is a subsection of juvenile offenders who can be diverted from a correctional facility, which is good. It's a positive change, but where they go is not well dealt with. There are options for them. Right now, we are housing them in our juvenile residential facility at the county's expense because it's not clear where else they should be. So, that and that needs to be cleaned up a little bit. Where should those, um, youth be? Who should pay for them? Should they have Medicaid, or should it totally be a county expense? Right now, that's, it's, it's a gray area. It's murky. It's murky. It's not very smooth. IIP, immediate intervention programs is a coordinated effort with the District Attorney's Office. It's been a little bumpy in Centwood County getting off that, getting that off the ground, but we're constantly revising and working with them to identify kids as soon as, as possible after arrest to get them into services so they don't have to have the formal conviction, exactly what you were talking about. That only works if there's services to go with it. If there's no services, if you just divert somebody and close your eyes, that doesn't do any good. There has to be services to go along with it. So timely identification of kids is something we've struggled, struggled with, with our IIP. And those are really, and then, of course, the funding. In this last budget cycle, half of the reserve was swept for evidence-based practices. We used to send, when I started doing this 100 years ago, we had 700 kids from Centwood County in out-of-home placement, and we might have 30 right now at the correctional facility. That's a big savings of money, and that money was to go into these pots for different programming. And nothing looks as good as a pot of money to anybody, so that's, of course, had a target on it. So that was, half of that was swept. So the fear is that the funding will not be stable to maintain these reforms that we've went through, and we can't continue to fund our, our programs to keep the kids in the community. So those are three issues that I think that Senate Bill 367 needs still, a little bit of tweaking on still.
Thank you for that, and I think you basically confirmed what I was saying as well. It sounds to me like when a, when a child may not necessarily need to go to juvenile corrections in Topeka, that we ought to have another option.
Yes.
Again, may not be warranted, I mean, they've not done something that deserves that type of a placement, but we don't have another placement option. So again, I think that confirms my point, and that it's disappointing to hear that they swept half, half the funds for those programs. I did not know that. I think we need to engage that discussion now. I didn't know that was going on, but.
Our local Juvenile Corrections Advisory Board Team Justice was active on the issue. Our Kansas Community Corrections Association was active on the issue, discouraging that, recommending that it not happen, but it, the governor presented it last year in her allocation, and then they, through, through votes and through the budget process, half of it did. It was, it was recommended to sweep the whole amount, and they ended up leaving half.
We talk about, we talk a lot about mental health and substance abuse these days, but you know, this is a overlapping issue, especially when you talk about these children. And I, and I think that to bury our head in the sand and to turn our back to the problem is not making it go away. We have got to deal with this as a community, and I think that we need to invest in this problem. Again, county, for decades, personally invested, Centwood County property tax dollars into the solution personally, and again, because we didn't like the fact that this wasn't picked up 100% by the state. To our satisfaction, we closed the program down, but it was working. It does require investment in these kids. I've said before, Glenn, you can quote me if you like, but invest in these kids on the front end, you can, you can either pay me now, or you pay me a whole lot more later when you have subsequent crimes and more victims, and a system that's frankly very expensive to incarcerate kids who could have been fixed, but we didn't have anything in place to help them at the appropriate time. These kids generally need some help to get on a better path at a very critical time in their life. If we don't have adequate, you know, adequate solutions in place at that time, the consequences of that is lifelong, and it's probably incalculable. So I am, I'm disappointed to hear that. I would tell you, with respect to the DA and the courts, I've talked to some of the folks in the courts, and there was some frustration on their part because they feel like they've lowered the standards with Senate Bill 367, that there should be conviction, there should be some prosecution, but they've been, their hands have been tied. And so I don't know if that's true or not, but I do think we ought to engage the DA and some of the folks in the court system to find out, do they have additional changes they would like to see us consider, and potentially a review of, a review of Senate Bill 367, and if you will, advocating to the, to the legislature for some, some solutions, including things like funding and maybe another placement option. But I do think if, if the DA and the courts have, have some input on, on this, I think it's time now, since 2017, here we are going into 2022 session next. This is an appropriate time for us to review kind of where we are. And I'll just say, coupled with this, is, in my opinion, is a disaster in our state's foster care program. And a lot of these kids end up in foster care when really they're not just children in need of care, they're actually children that have committed crimes that haven't been prosecuted. And the folks in foster care system, folks in foster care system have such a bad experience with one of these children that they turn, they, it turns them off to being a foster parent. Then we've got a lack of foster placement because this problem actually is impacting that situation now. So this is very complex, and I think that we as leaders need to understand the dynamics of everything we just talked about today, and come up with solutions that would help this problem now that we're five years into this, five years into this bill. I think it's, it's a good time for us to review this, and I'm not sure I agree with everything that's been done. I'm glad to know from your perspective, Glenda, that these programs are funded maybe slightly better, but it sounds like we may not have faith in that system going forward if the state's going to continue to get cheap on this. But this is obviously a very expensive, challenging issue, and we, we need to understand what needs to happen here and invest in these kids when we can make a difference. And so I'm going to continue to fight this issue. That's why I'm here today, is because of this very issue. That's why I'm on this bench, and I've never given up this fight. So I'm going to continue to fight this issue, and it's about, it's about helping these kids at the most critical time in their life. So thank you for a chance to have a deeper discussion, and I'll hopefully not say anything else today. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you both for being here today. So I just have a couple of questions. When we talk about, I'd like to talk about drug court for a second. When we, when we talk about that in the success rate, we have a number of folks who enter the program, and according to stats that were given last week, or was it this week? I don't even know. So we had 52% complete the program. We had, I think it was 46% leave the program. We had 2%, transfer out of the program to something different. So I guess when we talk about the success rate of that program, can you help explain the 46% of people who left the program?
Well, I don't know that it was left the program but weren't successful. So they have very strict guidelines in the drug court program, and if they continue to use and abuse drugs and not show up for appointments, then they get kicked out of the program.
So how do we get those folks to complete the program, I guess, is one question I have, because, and I don't, I don't expect you to answer that now, but when we, when we get people into the program, how can we get them to stay? What are things that we can do to get them to, you know, be successful? That's, that's one question. The conversation that we had, because you and I had a very lengthy conversation after our meeting the other day, and I appreciate your time on that, but something you mentioned was the cost for all of these services.
Sure.
So you mentioned the cost for the jail is $71 a day.
Seventy-one, I think it's $71.94 a day.
Seventy-one ninety-four a day, so almost $72 a day. We have, and the cost for pre-trial services is?
$4.05.
$4.05 a day. The cost for drug court is what?
Drug court is $24.35.
$24.35. The cost for work release?
Work release is $36 a day.
Dollars. The cost for adult residential?
Adult residential is $62.73.
And 73 cents. So the, I think the sheriff also mentioned that the average length of stay in our jail was 37 days. And so I think it's important for us to really understand what some of these programs do cost, and how we can invest more dollars in programs that don't cost us as much but have better outcomes.
Right.
It's like going upstream and pulling people out before they jump in and go down the river.
So all, most all of our programs, so let's start with juvenile detention.
Okay.
Our most expensive program is $215.87 a day. So putting kids in detention is costly.
Okay.
So we have all these other programs to keep kids out of detention. We have the juvenile residential facility, which is an alternative to detention, and that cost is $185 a day. That is still lower than detention costs. Home-based services, which is very similar to a, like a pre-trial for adults, it's like a pre-trial for juvenile, it's called home-based services, and the cost is $24 a day. JISP, that's the Juvenile Intensive Supervision Program. That cost per day is $13.90. Case management, so case management services for juveniles is $50.89 a day. And the ERC, the Evening Reporting Program, costs us $84.17 a day. Some of those are grant-funded programs, so they're paid for by the state with the state money that was diverted from using the out-of-home placement funds. And then, of course, you, we already went through the adult side. So those are all, all those programs are considerably lower than what it costs to put people in the sheriff's jail.
I think it's very telling when you look at actually what these programs cost. You know, I think the other thing that we talked about was, what is the long-term plan? What is the 10-year plan? How can we, as policymakers up here, who will not be here forever, how do we craft policies that will be long-lasting, that would utilize the programs that don't cost taxpayers as much but have better outcomes? Those are the kinds of things that we're thinking about. You know, we're talking about, just for example, our homeless outreach program at Center City, you know, we have folks, 99% of the time, they're out in the field, but we pay $84,000 a year to rent that space. Could we use that money in a different way? And those are the kinds of things that I think, just as an example, what is the kind of money that we're putting in and we're already maintaining, right? Can we sort of start chipping away and moving funds that we already have in our budget to fund more programs that are rehabilitative in nature? I think we had that conversation too. Can you speak to that?
Sure. So when we talk about, let's bring up crime prevention. We have crime prevention funds that the county gives for juveniles, and that's about We have, the KDOC provides prevention funds for juveniles at about $167,000. And one of the things that the governor did set aside money for this last, in the next budget cycle, is she did indicate that 1.5 million was going to go for prevention funds to the different counties. So we haven't seen that yet, but it's coming our way. What's missing in the adult world is, there aren't any adult prevention programs. Now, we do diversions for them in the DA's office. We're, and of course, there's a new law that's coming into play for a drug diversion program. We need to think about that, and we also sit on as the CJCC Council here. We need to start thinking what our 10-year plan needs to look like in this, in this county. What's our long-term plan going to look like that would address the things at the front end and not have to address them on the back end?
Yeah, I mean, I 100% agree with that. When we talk about the 37 days that someone sends and spends in the jail, what are they doing during that time? I mean, we're spending, on average, $2,500 for one person to sit in jail for 37 days, and they get out, and what do they do? Where do they go? What sort of rehabilitation are they, are they provided or encouraged to take? And I know there are a lot of programs that they're encouraged to, to attend and utilize, but I just, you know.
Well, I will tell you, when we, when we transferred, the sheriff used to run the work release program, and we transferred it to Corrections to help work with those folks and get them services and get them out of the jail faster because we could do it at a lesser cost. So that was one of our steps that we took. So in, now remember, these numbers are from 2020. So all our numbers in the Department of Corrections are a little bit lower because of 2020. So we had, we served 283 clients in 2020, and those are people that didn't serve time in the jail, that we got them out as quickly as we possibly could. Of course, with COVID, that slowed things down a lot. The capacity in my facilities obviously was never full because we have, you know, corrections officer vacancy issues. So we can only house people in our residential programs if we have enough people to actually monitor them. And we're having, you know, that crisis right now. So we have to think, what can we do differently in this community to keep adults and juveniles the same? We do a lot of work at the front end for juveniles, and we need to continue to do that, and we need the governor to continue to push money to KDOC that will fund those programs. It would be a very, it would be very problematic for Centwood County if we were not to get the funds for the evening reporting program that's doing such a great success. And, or even now, we're getting this new evidence-based program funds, which is about $767,000 that we get, to put into programs through our community, and some of our department people get those funds. We put programs in place as well for those. So these are all funds that are coming to juveniles, but we need to also work on the adult side as well. We have incentives for kids, but we don't have incentives for adults, not the same.
Well, I look forward to working with you to figure out what we can, what we can work to fund, how we can do things differently instead of just maintaining a system that's not working for any of us. So I appreciate your work on this, and I look forward to having those ongoing conversations about how we can really move the needle in a different direction. Thanks.
Okay. Thanks, Glenda. Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Chairman. I didn't see any other lights on, so I just wanted to say I would make a motion to receive and file, but before I, before you vote, I just wanted to just express my gratitude to both of you. You're both excellent at what you do. I think we're doing the best we can with what we have, and your, your, your performance measures are impressive, but I just think we, we could do more as a community and as a state to address these issues, and that's really my concern here. It's not about you. You're doing wonderfully. You're a fantastic leader, and Stephen, thank you for all your leadership as well. I'm proud of what we do here in Centwood County. I just think there's more opportunities, and so with that, I want to make sure, as you walk away today, don't feel like I'm, I'm not critical to you in any way. I'm a huge fan. I'm a cheerleader of Glenda Martins, and I, and I, and your department, and the people in your department are doing a tremendous job. Let's continue to look for solutions and ways to improve, and with that, I hope you just feel praised and appreciated rather than criticized today.
I do.
Thank you.
I do feel very supported by the county manager and the assistant county manager and the commission. I think that what we do every year is we look, we look, we dive deep into our programs to see what is working and what is not working, to tweak and fix and add new programming, enhance programming, and we have to do that almost every year because things change, and you can't keep offering the same service over and over again without tweaking it because our population continues to change. And so that's what we, one of the things that we do through our strategic planning and through our programming and what we do in the department to make things better. So thank you very much.
Okay. Commissioner Lopez?
Sorry. Can I get those average number costs of the daily? Can you send that to me?
Yes, I can send that to all of you.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
Okay. I don't know, it's the other comments. Motion to receive and file a report? Motion in a second. Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye.
Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item D, Presentation of the Quarterly Financial Report.
Good morning, Brett.
Good morning, Chairman Meitzner. Good morning, Commissioners. Brent Shelton, your Deputy CFO. For the last several days, we've been in budget hearings, looking forward at the county and at the county's financial picture. We're going to spend the next few minutes looking back at the first three months of 2021, as we look at the quarterly report for the first quarter of 2021. As we do with these, we compare them to the same time period for the prior year. So we'll be looking at how this, the numbers in this quarterly report compare to the numbers in the first quarter of 2021. I would remind you that this information is based on un-audited financial statements. I would remind you that this information is based on un-audited financial statements. And we're going to stay at a pretty high level, so please feel free to ask questions as we go through the report or at the conclusion. The document's been delivered to you, and it'll be on the county's website after you receive and file. I would be remiss if not mentioning that the report's only made possible, excuse me, through the combined efforts of the professionals that I work with in the budget and accounting areas. They work with people across this organization to compile and prepare this information. The first thing that we typically look at is a projection of where we're going to be at the end of the year in terms of fund balances across the six funds that the county operates. The way this chart is set up is that the first two rows show us our revenues and expenditures across these six funds. The bottom two show us the actual beginning and in a projected ending fund balance. The numbers across the middle, the net change in fund balance would be the difference between the first two columns, first two rows or the fourth and fifth row. So we usually like to point out when the numbers are declining, and those are all planned declinations in our fund balances in the county general fund and in the non-property tax-supported funds. Those declinations in fund balance are as a result of depositing some of the money that we received from the CARES Act into those funds, knowing that we would be spending those funds in the first six months of 2021 to mitigate the effects of COVID. Our enterprise and internal service funds are projected to decrease. We have deposited insurance proceeds into the risk management fund, and we're currently spending those dollars in making repairs due to a windstorm at the zoo. The others were showing some modest increases. Lower interest rates will improve our fund balance position in our debt service fund. In the other property tax-supported funds, we're projecting, based on what we have right now, due to some position vacancies that are hard to fill, some potential savings or increases in fund balance in that area. And then the Fire District General Fund, their revenues are increasing faster than their expenditures, so we're looking at probably an increase in their fund balance at the end of the year. Let's look next specifically at the county property tax-supported funds, of which there are eight funds that are primarily supported financially through a direct mill levy for those funds. And you'll see a pretty strong upward tick in the last couple of years in our collections. We're up about 5.1 million dollars in total in these funds year-over-year compared to the first quarter of 2020. Expenditures in these same funds are also increased. We're up about 4.4 million dollars. Now, we spent about 8 million dollars in the first quarter on COVID-related activities. So the next slide shows you that we would be, actually, we have spent less in these property tax-supported funds without those one-time COVID-19 expenditures. Taking a look at some of the details in these funds, I would point, draw your attention to the first, the first row, which is our ad valorem tax collections. Now, we experienced a 4.6% increase in our assessed valuation or our tax base across the county. But you'll note that compared to the same time period last year, our collections of those taxes are up 6.4%. Now, that's one of the things that numbered nerds will, will zero in on because typically, people's habits don't change. If we increase our tax base or our tax levy, we'll see a corresponding percentage increase in those tax collections. But we're seeing more people pay this, on the first half tax bills, more people paid in full than had historically been the case. If you look down about to our, about halfway down, there are three different categories there. Our non-business license and permits, penalties and interest on back taxes and officers' fees. All three of those are increased at a pretty healthy percentage. We're seeing more activity from MAB, for the Metropolitan Planning Department, with people taking out permits. We're seeing an increased activity in people making up and paying back taxes. And as the Register of Deeds pointed out a couple days ago, business is booming with property sales, mortgage refilings and so forth. And so the, the fees that her office is collecting are up by about a half a million dollars over the same time period last year, or 50%. The next, to the bottom line there, Special City-County Highway Fund, I would just point out that in the first quarter of last year, we weren't experiencing reduced travel as a result of COVID. We are still experiencing some of that, although it's improving. But, so we're coming back, but we're just not quite to the level we were before. That's gasoline tax revenues that, that we receive from people driving. If we look at the, the key personnel expenditures, and we usually separate this out because personnel costs are our biggest expenditure in these funds. And overall, we're looking at about a 1.2% increase for the same time period compared to the time, same time period last year. The biggest driver for that is the county's cost for the county's portion of health insurance premiums for employees, otherwise a little bit lower in salary and wages and overtime. Non-personnel expenditures in the property tax-supported funds, we're seeing some decreases there pretty much across the board, with the exception of our temporary employment services, which were up 52,800%. Basically, 10,000 dollars was spent a year ago for temporary employees, and this year, in the first quarter, it's over 5 million dollars. We know what that's been for. It's been COVID mitigation efforts. Taking a quick look now at the Fire District. You'll notice a strong increase in their revenues, about 1.1 million dollars versus the first quarter of 2020. And as indicated earlier, their expenditures are only up by about 100,000 dollars. Looking at them in a little bit more detail, we saw the same trend with their, with the collections of taxes in the Fire, for the Fire District that we saw across the county, only it was, it was much greater. That 11.3% collection rate of taxes in the Fire District or for the Fire District corresponds to a 2.5% increase in their assessed value or their tax levy. So we expect that these two things will level out as we see the impacts of our second-half tax collections. If they don't, we'll have some further analysis for you as we look at the second-quarter results. Otherwise, pretty standard increases there in salaries and pension contributions. Now, the county operates over 30 different funds that are not supported through property tax. These include grant funds and things of that nature. And we see that we have a decline in our revenues in those funds by a little over 5 million dollars from first quarter 2020 to first quarter 2021. The anomaly in this is the 2020 collections, as we'll see in just a minute. Expenditures in these funds are also up over the time period. And as we can see in just a minute, as we look at a little more detail, those are COVID-related expenditures and grant awards. The first row on this chart are state revenue from the, for Kansas Department of Aging and Disability Services. There's a grant that's paid to com care. And what we have seen is that in the first quarter of 2020, that 8.2 million dollars that was paid included an additional payment in that quarter that we didn't receive in the first quarter of 2021. Throughout the rest of the chart, we see some reductions in our revenues, Medicaid and some of the state revenues. Com care delivered fewer services and billed less this year versus last year. And I'm hearing that some of the payments that we're receiving from the state for some of the pass-through grants and so forth are coming through a little slower this year than they were last year due to the volume that they are handling. So I don't think there's any cause for alarm. It's just some, the money's just not here yet, but we'll continue to watch that as we go through the year. The key expenditures in this area, as I mentioned earlier, we have awarded about 8 million dollars in COVID-related grants in the first quarter of 2021. We didn't have any funds in the first quarter of 2020 to do that with. Salaries and wages, we're showing a pretty large decrease there. This is pretty much due to a number of vacant positions in com care, and as you've heard, those have been difficult to fill, so salary and wages overall are declining. You'll notice a very large increase on contracted meals. That's simply an accounting change where those are being tracked independently of additional services. So we're not spending a bunch more money on the Meals on Wheels program. It's just we're accounting for it separately now, so it's showing up as a, as a separate The next two charts show the fund balances at the end of a quarter for the last five years. And the chart always looks pretty erratic, but it's really pretty steady. We get tax distributions in January and March that are reflected in that first quarter, additional tax distributions in June showing up in the second quarter. Those are the bulk of those revenues, and then we're spending funds throughout the rest of the year, bringing that fund balance down. The next chart just shows that same information. It's only shown now as a percentage, none of our, percentage of, the unrestricted fund balances, a percentage of budgeted expenditures. That bottom line with the dots or the, the yellow diamonds is an indication that, per county policy, we don't let those fund balances fall below 20%. It's tough to look for something positive to say about our investment returns in this interest rate environment. We have over 300 million dollars in idle funds that are currently invested, but the positive things that I could say to you are that the average benchmark yield right now is .03%. That's across, across the industry. And we are up from .15% to .28% from the last quarter of 2020. So we've increased our yields. We're at .28% versus a benchmark yield of .03. That's about as close to no yield as I think you can get. Some of the significant capital projects that were either substantially or totally completed in the first quarter of 2021 are shown on this chart. If you'll notice, each one of these came in under budget, and they were either, as I said, completed or almost completed in the first quarter of the year. The first one is the Adult Residential and Work Release Waiting Room Expansion. The Department of Corrections assumed supervision of the sheriff's work release program, and they did not have adequate space to handle those additional 100 folks that went through the system. So they remodeled a 65-square-foot facility with about a 680-foot expansion that gave them room to serve more people, ADA compliance and some additional security features. The second one, the Adult Detention Facility, first floor and courthouse space. The sheriff's investigation team moved out of the second and third floors of the main courthouse, vacated about 12,000 square feet there. That's been renovated for the district attorney's office. They took, began occupancy the first part of April, and there's 41 workspaces with the additional office accoutrements in that space that they're taking over. The next three are bridges, and this is not as long as the bridge show you're going to get in December, I promise you. The first one that was completed was B-489, and this was a bridge that was built in 1966. It'd become structurally deficient. It's over the Cowskin Creed on Hydraulic Avenue. With a million-dollar grant from KDOT, this bridge was reconstructed, and here's the before and after picture of that bridge. B-495 was also a structurally deficient box cobert concrete structure, and that came in under budget. Our actual construction costs fell in at around 500,000 dollars. Here it is before and after.
You don't think that you could have gotten another couple of years out of B-495? That was really...
If this guy would have stood there and held it up for us for two more years, we might have.
Wow.
But the worst one was B-513, which was a wooden structure that had to be closed in June of 2020. They began construction in November of 2020. It's been completed, budgeted for 650,000, came in at about 488,000 dollars. Here's that wood structure before, and here's what it was replaced with. So if I was to sum up the report and give you some things that we are, some, some key points, things that we're looking at, I would tell you that our tax base has experienced pretty good growth. We've got some headwinds right now that you heard about from the appraiser a few days ago. But with the real estate market the way it is, we look in the outer years for some, some continued growth there. We do have some healthy fund balances at this time. We're spending those down with, on some of the COVID, but everything that we're looking at there was planned. As I mentioned, our collection efforts have improved. We saw increased collections of delinquent tax. We've seen earlier payments, and I think some of that's going to be a one-time thing, but it does help our financial position at this time. Slight growth in our retail, sales and use taxes, and as mentioned before, a very strong real estate market in the local area. Some of the things that we're looking out for, some are going to have positive and some maybe not positive fiscal impacts. We are in the midst of a very hard insurance market. As we've mentioned before, we're expecting a pretty large increase to our property insurance premiums. That'll be something that we'll be looking at in the second quarter. Just to put that in perspective, there were over 80 billion dollars in losses to the insurance industry last year, which was up 40% from the year before. Things out of our control. Storms across the globe, social, they call it social pollution, which is things like, or social inflation, civil unrest and things like that. So there, those things are out of our control but are being passed along to us. Our local employment growth does continue to improve. At the end of March 2020, we had a local unemployment rate of 3.6%. The next month, it was 18.7%. So as soon as things began to close down, we saw a tremendous hit in this area. We're back now to the local unemployment rate at the end of March of about 5.6%. So while we improved a great deal over the last year, we're not quite back to where we As you know, the American Rescue Plan Act is going to provide us with some additional federal stimulus dollars. We're looking... federal stimulus dollars. We're looking at that. We've been looking at guidance to see how we can best utilize that to help the county as an organization and leverage those dollars across the region. There's also some additional federal infrastructure legislation that is on the horizon, some earmarks and things of that nature that we are attuned to so we can hopefully bring some of those dollars to the area. You heard about some of those that Public Works is working on. And finally, we saw a lot of legislative action that could have direct fiscal impacts on us over the last three months. We continue to monitor those, analyze those as we go forward. We'll provide you with information as we, as we find it and as we go forward. So with that, I would answer any questions you might have and would recommend at the conclusion of that that you receive and file.
Okay. Thanks for the report. Is there any questions or comments from the commission? I don't see any, so I make a motion to receive and file the report. There's a motion and a second. Be in no comments. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Consent agenda.
Mr. Manager.
Good morning. Chairman and Commission recommend approval of consent items E through H this morning.
Okay. Is there any questions on consent items E through H? Seeing no questions, I make a motion to approve consent items E through H. There's a motion and a second. Be in no comments. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Legislative issues.
Chairman, good afternoon again, or good morning, excuse me. Akeem Asher, Communications Director. So just going to provide you an update, the latest update on the legislative platform. So I've handed out our plaque, our card that we created when we created our platform late last year, as well as a document that Jessica will go over with you guys this morning. So just kind of looking at the documents here, we've got Justin with the Counselor's Office. Justin's going to go over, give you guys an update on Senate Bill 273, which is formerly Senate Bill 286, and House Bill 2313. As you know, both of these bills deal with property tax reimbursement to local businesses that were closed during the pandemic. And then we've got Jessica and I believe Jason Watkins with Watkins Public Strategies. He's going to join us by phone. He's not feeling well today. But they're going to go over, there was questions about our legislative platform concerning behavioral health and mental health issues, and that's what Jason and Jessica are going to tackle for you all today. So with that, I'll turn it over to Justin to give you an update.
Hey, Justin.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. Justin Wagoner, Assistant County Counselor. I'm doing well. Thank you.
Can we formally congratulate you on being awarded...
Sure, go right ahead.
No, our sincere congrats and well deserved. It's, it's rewarding to know that the hard work that we, we all went through this last year, and you were very critical or very crucial to that. And thank you for your, all the work you did.
Thank you, Chairman. I did want to make a couple of comments, if that's okay, on that. I guess first off, thank you. Secondly, you know, thank you for working with me as I advised you and worked with all of you through this pandemic. I know it's been a lot of work for everyone. We're still working on it, of course, but I've appreciated that. Also, working with county staff under Tom's leadership and other folks. You know, I've said it before, and I'm not just sucking up to my boss here, but working in the county Counselor's Office, I think is a hidden gem in terms of working in the Wichita legal community. And it's an honor to get some recognition from the local bar association, so I really appreciated that. I also wanted to point out that while I've been the attorney who's probably been up here at the podium the most in front of you over the last 15 months or so on COVID-19 orders and everything else, there's a lot of work that other attorneys in the office under Mike's leadership and our support staff have done in the last 15 months that really is behind the scenes but is vitally important to, and has been vitally important to the county's COVID-19 response. I really want to take a minute to, to recognize all that work. It's been, it's been a lot of hard work and a team effort by everyone in the office. Thank you. All right. So what I'm up here on is two different bills, as Akeem said. And it's probably worth noting first that the, on Friday night and early Saturday morning, the Kansas Legislature approved two different bills that Akeem mentioned. The first is Senate Bill 273, which was formerly Senate Bill 286. They made a couple of changes to that. I'll be pretty brief in my comments on this, just focus on how it impacts county. There would still be this three-member board at the state level that would review claims from businesses that were impacted by COVID-19 orders. But the, the, one of the changes they made was to amend the county, what the county would be required to set aside in terms of ARPA funding to 35%. And then the other portion of that was that the, the federal regulations on ARPA funding came out, or the federal guidance came out earlier this week. Lindsay Poe Rousseau, Chief Financial Officer, can answer any questions on that or describe that in more detail if you have questions. I think the Reader's Digest version. And again, these are still being reviewed by staff, is that the, the regulations and guidance indicate that the, that states cannot dictate to municipalities how they would spend the ARPA funding. There's also a number of other ways, and Lindsay could describe this if you have more questions, that there may be inconsistencies between Senate Bill 273 and those regulations. But again, it's being reviewed and looked into at this time. I would point out also that that bill has not yet become law. At this point, I believe it's on the governor's desk. I haven't heard any indication publicly of what she intends to do. The vote was not quite veto-proof majority on either, on either the House or the Senate. But I, of course, we wouldn't know how the legislators might vote if there was a veto in the future, so that kind of remains to be seen how that may play out. The, so that's the first bill. That was going to summarize. The second is House Bill 2313. As you'll recall, there were kind of two components to this bill. One dealt with kind of a targeted, if you will, tax refund to businesses. It was limited in scope in terms of how much money they could get and the types of businesses that would qualify for it. That was Sections 1 through 14 of the bill. That was deleted out of the bill, was not included. They did retain Section 15, but the major change they made to that, which Section 15 was the portion that we had concerns about it applying retroactively, making the county's 2022 budget have to have, be required to compensate businesses that would make claims. They amended that to make it apply, I would believe it's applying prospectively, beginning in 2022, and not retroactively. And there were comments to that effect when this went to the conference committee. This bill did have strong veto-proof majorities in both the Senate and the House. I believe it was tied to the education mill levy as well. So I think we would anticipate that this would become law, and really, it's more of a forward-looking measure that will, you know, any future health orders and consideration. It's going to be one of the factors that, you know, whether it's the Board of County Commissioners or perhaps Dr. Menz or the Health Officer may have to take into account. But again, would, should not have any impact financially on the county's 2022 budget. I'd be happy to stand for any questions. I mentioned Lindsay could certainly answer any ARPA-based questions you've got this time. And if you don't have any questions, then I'll turn it over to Jessica.
Okay. I don't see any questions. Again, just thanks for, so we'll continue to evaluate the ARPA world versus the state rules that are...
Certainly. All right. Thank you.
Okay.
All right. Good morning.
Good morning, Jessica. Thanks for...
Jessica Lucas, for the record, one of the Sedgwick County lobbyists. I do believe Jason Watkins is on the phone this morning as well.
Jason, are you there? Is Jason there?
Jason, do you have us?
Yeah, I have.
Okay. Welcome, Jason. Okay.
I appreciate Justin's detail of 273 and 2313. As I left the Capitol on Saturday morning, I told Jason I looked at my phone, maybe I shouldn't have. But I had logged 6.9 miles in heels and 34 flights of stairs that day as we went between conference committees all day long, talking about what those bills were going to look like and what the final iteration was. So we were busy right up until they sent us home about 2:30 a.m. I'm excited to be here today to talk about Sedgwick County's legislative agenda. And first, I want to thank Mike and Tom and Akeem, who have been invaluable to Jason and I as we have shared information back and forth and tried to make sure that we were on path with representing your needs and making sure that we were taking care of Sedgwick County. So I think the first thing to celebrate today, and maybe you've already done this, but I haven't had the opportunity with all of you, is that we finally got the nuisance abatement bill passed after several years and a lot of heavy lifting. I was refreshing my memory on the vote count this morning, and 80 votes in the House and 29 in the Senate, so not insignificant either. So very, very exciting. Based on the legislative agenda, we also saw the right to a speedy trial pass. That was, I think, fairly early on in the session. You also had identified some broadband priorities, and the state continues to have dollars, a small amount of state funding, but it was a significant amount at the time for the next 10 years, I believe, dedicated to broadband. But when I say it's a small amount but significant at the time, that's because we didn't know that the pandemic was going to bring so many broadband resources. It's my understanding, I think we're at the floor of about $400 million in broadband investments. Secretary Tolan told me that he believes that with that amount of resource, we will not have to Band-Aid broadband development anywhere in the state. And in fact, the Treasury guidance indicates that it has to be, though there are some exceptions, but by and large, it will have to be 100, I'm going to, I want to say megawatts, but I'm getting my energy in broadband. But the, the 100-bit of speed is what it will be. So that's a significant opportunity. And the other piece that I want to just put out for the record, particularly if anyone is listening, there are also additional dollars available for broadband for anyone qualifying that could get their cost offset. And so this is in particular for anyone receiving free and reduced lunches or even on a Pell Grant. The state has a program available through the ARPA money for under-resourced folks to be able to get some broadband contributions. So anyone listening should certainly check into that, and I'm happy to help send around that information later if it's helpful. We also saw suspended driver's license reform. Commissioner Howell was a big champion of that. And the other piece, I know we certainly haven't solved all of those issues, but also that Wednesday of veto session week, the Legislative Post-Audit Committee approved an audit to further look at that and do some additional research, research on the issue. So I am hopeful that that will provide some greater information and a stronger pathway for further reforms to help improve that system. Of course, the Property Tax Transparency Bill passed, that was another early-on victory. In the KEMA bill, we also saw the designation of 911 operators as first responders. That was another piece that had been identified as a priority for Sedgwick County. And finally, after a lot of discussion, we saw some additional funding for the scrap metal database. So that's exciting for folks who are involved in that program. So then we get to mental health victories. And I do think there were a lot of improvements made and resources designated for additional mental health resources. The Certified Community Behavioral Health Clinics, there is additional money there, including 10 FTEs. That program will go into effect, enabling the certification of community mental, community behavioral health centers. And that enables us to generate more money, to pull down more money from the federal government. So that was definitely the highest priority in regard to mental health this year and what was seen as the best option moving forward, and saw that get across the line. We also saw $3 million added for 988 Development. So this is the line that folks will be able to call if they're having a mental health crisis. They will dial 988. That was passed through the federal government, and as often happens with the federal government, great idea they had, but they didn't put any funding behind it, just require that starting July 1, 2022, folks have to be able to call 988. The conversation in the legislature has been the importance of not just, and Health Chairman Brenda Landwear has really been the one spearheading this conversation and, and driving hard for additional resources. But what folks don't want to happen is that you merely just call 988 and tell them your crisis, but there's nowhere for you to go. There's no additional funding to help address the crisis. And so this $3 million is intended to provide a pathway over the next year to start to build out that system. The goal, and I'm speaking of the goal based on if we had Representative Landwear here, she had identified 50 cents on the bill that would provide resources then, that would address behavioral, mobile behavioral health units and several other pieces to help fund these services. That money did not get through the process this year, but the idea is that the $3 million helps fund solutions with the hope that next year, the legislature can discuss what amount should that be. Is it 50 cents? Is it 25 cents? Is it 10 cents? But that discussion is expected to happen next year, and I would encourage all of you to consider that as you think about your agenda for next year, what that looks like, and, and probably have some other additional consultation on it. But, but more is coming in that regard. But, but a big win to have that little bit of seed money so that when July 1, 2022 hits, we are ready to go. And folks certainly did not want to wait another year with nothing happening and then have to be ready to go. There was also some just additional community mental health center grants. They'll receive an additional $2 million. The Family Crisis Prevention Program will see an additional $3 million. And also an additional $9.6 million in enhancements for behavioral, behavioral health mobile responses were added to the budget as well. So again, all good things. We saw no sweeps to SGF from the Addictions Fund or the evidence-based juvenile programs. And then I would just add a couple of other things that happened this year that are not directly related to your legislative agenda, but I think fit within the value systems of things that you've prioritized. We saw additional $1 million for our health departments. That'll be distributed through a formula. The Indigent Defense Services Fund was increased $20 an hour to $100 for folks providing those services. There was also a bill establishing drug treatment options for those on diversion. The renewed, the Criminal Justice Reform Commission was renewed for an additional year. Judges and support staff will receive a 5% salary increase. And then the KDHE lab, some movement has taken place to begin to move that from the very antiquated space that it occupies at Forbes Field to a new building. Lot of things that we do, and certainly with COVID, we were relying on that lab. So I think it's a good thing that the state's going to move forward on updating that. It's, it's definitely in need of it. So with that, I will stop and pause for any questions. And I guess let's first ask maybe if Jason has anything he wants to add to my comments, and then we can answer questions.
Jason?
No, I do not. I think Jessica covered it very well.
All right. Questions?
Okay, Jessica. Thank you for your, for your presentation. Got a couple of questions ready. Commissioner Cruz.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you for being here today. I appreciate this update. I'd like to have these more often. Can we get that on the calendar? I'd love to see you here at this podium a lot more if you're available and have the time. The questions I have are regarding, I see the added $1 million to increase funds to local health departments using a formula for dispersment. So is that sort of, so how is the additional $2 million for community health centers grants going to be dispersed? Is it, is it a formula for dispersment like the $1 million? Or how, how will we be able to know of this money that is statewide, what is coming to Sedgwick County?
Yeah. So I'm happy to work with your staff. They probably have a better ability to talk you through what those formulas are, but there is a formula that works. So for the health departments, they're going to use that within the agency. I can't tell you exactly what that formula is, but your staff is probably the best place to start. But any questions, if there's some absence of clarity, then I'm happy to speak with the agencies as well to talk through exactly what that looks like and what the distribution amount means. But they don't publish that, so we don't have access to know. It means X number of dollars for each individual entity, but certainly can help find that if, if staff doesn't have it.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. And as for coming, it's certainly difficult to be here during legislative session, but we can always, we are always happy to zoom in. And then for the off-season, of course, happy to, to come and address all of you as necessary and whenever you need us here.
Okay. All right. Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, Jessica and Jason, thank you very much for what you did during the last legislative session. We sincerely appreciate all your energy and efforts that you put into this. I just have one question from the sheet you gave us. It says, next to the last bullet, created a Kansas Fight Addiction Act utilizing any proceeds... I just have one question from the sheet you gave us. It says, next to last bullet, created Kansas Fight Addiction Act utilizing any proceeds from opioid litigation. Is this just kind of feel-good legislation? Because there are no proceeds and nothing on the horizon that I see right now.
Yeah, so thank you for asking about that. Basically, the Attorney General will handle that. There's expected that in the future, there likely will be litigation and there will be opioid proceeds that are distributed to states. And I think some of that may already be happening, though, don't quote me on that. I'm not intimately versed in the opioid piece. But basically, this means that the state will handle that and handle the dispersment. That was a priority of the Attorney General, similar to what happened with the tobacco fund. So I think people know there's going to be lawsuits related to the misuse of those drugs, and this is a mechanism for distributing those funds. But you're right. To my knowledge, nothing has been done at the state level. This does clip the wings of the ability, the city, of individual cities and communities to litigate opioid circumstances.
I guess that's two concerns that I've got. First of all, you addressed the tobacco litigation, and we didn't see anything. The state swept all that. Nothing came down to the counties, and we never saw any assistance from the state. And now the state, it appears, and I don't know what's in this act, so I haven't seen it, they also want to now come in. Sedgwick County, for example, started some opioid litigation several years ago. But now it looks like the state wants to try and sweep that funds too. So I don't know if that's in this act or not. I would be very disappointed if it is, but I wouldn't be surprised.
What I will do is pull some information on that, and we'll provide an update to all of you on what is and isn't in there and what the opportunities are.
Okay. Well, once again, we did have some successes. We had a little bit of a failure on our charter commission, unfortunately, but that wasn't for your fault. That was the fault of some other individuals here in Sedgwick County, and so I'm a little disappointed in that. But beyond that, you did a great job. Thank you.
Well, thank you. It was a good year, and I think there are some successes to walk away with, and we certainly look forward to addressing additional issues next year, and we'll enjoy being in that process as we talk about what that focus looks like for 2022.
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for being here today.
You're welcome.
Hello to Jason as well. I'm curious, you said you walked 6.9 miles on the last day. How many miles did he walk?
He doesn't have a tracker, so I don't know. But I still don't really quite understand how I did all that, but that's what my phone says, so I'm going to go with it.
Well, I'm very impressed. You all did work very, very hard for us this year. And again, our platform, I kind of bifurcate the items on our platform into two categories. Those things that I could write the bill. I understand exactly what we're asking for. It's very crisp. And on those items, I think we're very, very successful this year overall. Again, as Commissioner Dennis said, there was one disappointment. But the reality is, we're batting at least an A. I think maybe not quite an A+, but we're at least an A. And for the items on here that are kind of, I use the word squishy, I don't know exactly how to write the bill. I don't know what magnitude of funding we're asking for. Those items, I think we did move the ball. But again, so it's hard to say we were completely successful, but I think that we obviously did make a dent in our, on the platform, these platform issues, even for the county. I think we have a lot of success to look backwards and to say it was really a stellar session. I think the legislature did a really tremendous job. I want to say thank you to all of our colleagues at the State House. Couple of points. You did say one thing that I'm a little confused about, because right before you came in here, I don't know if you were able to listen to our briefing earlier, but we had our Director of Corrections was in here, and she was talking about that there was actually a sweep about one half of the funds that were left over for juvenile-based, community-based programs. There was some money apparently available to that, and the state did, according to her, swept about half those funds. And so I don't know if that's going to be validated, or if you have any comment on that?
I don't. I will double check. Sometimes catching those sweeps is not as easy to do, so I would trust the agency over my review because they are more intimately familiar with how that works, but happy to double check on that.
I'm glad to see it actually was on our platform. It says opposed reductions or sweeps of evidence-based juvenile program funding. So again, if that did happen, I guess I'll view that as a loss. Maybe we have a B+ now. But anyway, overall, very, very good session. I would point out, I always get confused if it's 52 or 53. Which one's the charter commission?
53.
53. Senate Bill 53 is not dead. Listen to understand, this is below the line in the House. It passed the Senate, and it's passed the committee in the House. It's waiting for the next step, which would be general orders in the House. So it's not dead. Again, it just has, every bill doesn't have to pass in one year. We have a two-year window where we can write and forward legislation. But this bill, again, it needs to be, it needs to have some adrenaline pumped into it. I think that, again, as Commissioner Dennis said, it was almost intentional misunderstandings and mischaracterizations of that bill. I'll just state upfront, I don't personally have a strong affinity for the bill. I don't mind one way or the other, to the will of the legislature, whatever they choose. But I think what they unfortunately didn't quite understand, I think, the reason for this bill, we thought this would be non-controversial and would just fly through the legislature, and it surprised us. It actually got some, maybe unnecessary lobbying against the bill because I think it was based on some misinformation that got out. Without wasting time describing this today, I will just say that I do think this bill is harmless in terms of, to our departments and to our state. The idea just allows our people, the electors of Sedgwick County, to essentially recreate, if you will, tweaks in Sedgwick County's structural government. So it's not a huge issue. It shouldn't be threatening to anybody. And anything that this bill would allow us to do, we could do as a board without using charter commissions, or you could use an advisory board. So there's other things out there that would actually allow us to move those ideas forward if that's what we wanted to do. But anyway, having said that, it's a small loss. I want to say also, I believe that the driver's license bill, this is, I think, the third or fourth year I worked on that. And I'm so proud of the fact we have this done this year. What a huge accomplishment. And I'm looking forward to seeing how this changes our people here that can hopefully continue to engage and be productive under that bill. I know that Senator Lisa Fosca Doe and I think Nick Hoheisel in the House were instrumental, and maybe others out there, but I want to just give them kudos for a job well done. The metal theft bill, I've added that. Again, I continue to advocate for that issue. I had a family member just lost a Cadillac convertible less last week, and it's going to cost $1,000 to fix it. And this person hardly makes any money, so it's a huge problem. And I just think that for us not to fund this program and have victims across our community continues to be a challenge. And so I'm proud of the fact that we actually have some movement on that. And then the nuisance abatement, again, I think this is the fourth or fifth year I've worked on that. Jason, Justin has been tremendous on that issue, and the staff from the council's office has been tremendous. And so to get to some movement there is huge for my district. I can't speak for the rest of the county, but for my district, this is an enormous movement. I'm looking forward to seeing some things addressed in terms of health and safety violations. Right now, we've never had the chance to solve those issues, but we do now. So overall, I give us at least a B+, if not an A, and thank you for all your great work. And I'm proud of you. I'm proud of Jason. I'm proud of Sedgwick County. Unlike other governing bodies, I think we actually are very, very effective, maybe more so than KAC, no offense to them, more so than LKM. And I have no idea how Wichita did this year, but I think that we are setting the bar very high for moving our ideas forward to make this community better. And thank you for all your work on that, all the work this year.
Thank you. I want to speak to that because I did have someone who said to me, you know, Jessica, our delegation, meaning of a geographical area, just doesn't stick together like yours does. And I do think that through all of your leadership and the engagement that you've had with legislators, we have seen the Sedgwick County delegation is incredibly responsive to things that we need and are great to work with. And we saw that on the suspended driver's license reform. A problem was identified. We saw folks from both sides who worked together to change that. So I am also very proud of the work that happens on behalf of Sedgwick County with all of you and what our delegation is doing. And think that we can only continue to benefit from having that strong connection to one another and that commitment to solving problems for this area of the region. As soon as we're divided, it just makes everything much harder. So it was a particular note of pride when someone said to me, "Our delegation just doesn't stick together like yours." So kudos to all of you, and of course, kudos to the men and women that represent Sedgwick County.
Okay. Jason, this is Pete. Thank you and Jessica for everything. I don't see other comments. I'd like to also just lend a compliment. I'm encouraged, you referenced Brenda Landwear, her role in the, she's the Chair of the.
Chair of Health.
Chair of Health. It's comforting and rewarding for me to know that we have somebody like her trying to, she's paying a lot of attention to our mental health issues and our other health issues that kind of elevated, we really exposed that locally and regionally. And having her, with her leadership, embracing that is very, very helpful and encouraging, I think, for that issue, which is kind of high on our list, so.
Yeah, for sure. She's an incredible champion, and I look for her to only continue her engagement and to broaden opportunities for Sedgwick County. I will follow up on the opioid and the fee sweeps.
Okay. Anything else? Mike or Tom? Anybody? Okay. Thank you. Thank you again.
Thanks again.
Great presentation. Jason, thanks for all your help.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Make a motion. Do we have to receive and file that report? Okay, motion to receive and file in a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Committee reports.
You know, before that, can, we have a little housekeeping. Can I do an off-agenda item related to just a letter of endorsement? I'd like to make a motion that we do an off-agenda item for an endorsement letter. There's a motion in a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. Commissioner, I know this came at us, we always have these requests for support letters and mainly for grants and things like that, but Wichita State's asking for a support letter for their application to Kansas Health Foundation for funding architectural drawings of a potential joint education center downtown between Wichita State, KU Med, WSU Tech. And so it's a very simple support letter. I can obviously just sign it. I can sign one from me individually, or we can. Or if you would like to show as a commission support letter, I'd be glad to do so. Again, it's just for a grant with the Kansas Health Foundation for Funding Architectural Drawings.
Question to approve the letter?
Okay.
May we see it?
Yeah. I apologize for not, can we let everybody see it? It's only three or four paragraphs. Well, either way, we can pass it around, and we can make copies as well. I apologize for kind of a last minute. Their deadline was today, apparently. And I just thought it would be helpful to let the commission partake as a body.
I already read it.
You read it?
You want me to just read this out loud so that we can?
Okay.
Let me just read it.
Absolutely.
You'll read it?
Okay.
That way it gets, the whole public sees it and all of the.
Absolutely, absolutely.
All of the commissioners. I'm writing today to show my support for a proposed Health Science Education Center in downtown Wichita, an innovative collaboration between Wichita State University and the University of Kansas. To continue meeting the needs of our employers and improving the economic vitality of our region, we must offer new opportunities that attract and retain talent. Healthcare is a sector with amazing growth potentials, one that is clearly critical to the economic success of Wichita and surrounding counties. Because Wichita is already a healthcare hub for so many people, specifically those in rural communities, we have the responsibility to continue evolving in order to provide cutting-edge health services to our citizens as well as open new doors for aspiring and existing healthcare professionals in order to address current and future labor shortages. And we must be bold in how we go about it. This plan between WSU and KU is just that. It proposes to unify the Health Science Educational Programs at Wichita State, WSU Tech, and KU School of Medicine at Wichita and the KU School of Pharmacy. Combining the incredible knowledge and talents that already exist between these Health Science Education Programs is sure to bring forth a wealth of new opportunities for citizens, students, healthcare professionals, and area businesses, as well as increased energy to our city's core. I commend WSU and KU for their vision to join forces for the greater good of our region, and thank you as you consider lending your financial support to this initiative. I have no problem with that letter being signed out by the commission. Make a motion to have the commission, the chairman, sign out on behalf of the commission.
Okay. I think.
That motion was already made.
That motion was made by Lacy.
I apologize.
You want to second it?
I'll second.
All right. So a motion in a second. Any other comments? Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Chairman. I'm glad to support the letter. I do think just a stylistic tweak there at the beginning, change it from "I" to "we." Thank you.
Good catch.
Yes.
Exactly. Okay, motion in a second with the change from "I" to "we," and I don't see other comments. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez? Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. Thank you, Commissioner, for, and apologize for the last minute, but sometimes these things come in at the last minute, so. Next item, please.
Committee reports.
Any committee reports? Commissioner Cruz?
There is a policy subcommittee today for the Mental Health and Substance Abuse Coalition at noon. If you guys would like to join, please let me know. I'll send you the link.
Oh, that's good. Thank you. Send us the, Commissioner Lopez, you want to give a report? How did your chocolate night go? Death by Chocolate.
Death by Chocolate was a success. It was sold out. The tickets were sold out. Because they were in between exhibits, they had more space to set up different booths and everything. So I would say it was a complete success. Everybody there seemed to be having just an amazing time. So I'm really happy to be, to be able to be a part of it, and then I sit on the Exploration Place Board, so that was a lot of fun. It kind of helped see the, or at least see how they got all that going on the back end, so it was a very good night.
Okay. I would agree. Any other comments? I don't see any other committee reports. Okay, next item, please.
Other.
Anybody have anything other to report on? And I don't see any, so. And that, so we're at the end? Okay. So we do not have an executive session, and so we will, being, business is closed today for the end of the day. So we will stand adjourned. Thank you for watching.